I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington School Board to order. All members are in attendance. Director Corman's in the back, but she's gonna join us in a minute. And we will please scan and remove your hats and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would someone like to move approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. This evening... Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward. Next, we'd like to tell you about a requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom procedures, and the like. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes in organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I know there's some students in the audience. I'd like to invite them to come forward. Just say their name. I know they're from Jefferson High School if you want to say your name and your teacher. And then you can file back to your seat. Thanks.
Hi, everybody. My name's TJ Voight and my teacher is Danny Storlein.
My name's Patrick Grogan and my teacher's also Daniel Storlein.
I'm Wyatt Johnson and my teacher's also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Tanner Greeley and my teacher's also Danny Storlein.
I'm John Paul Brandt Jude. My teacher's also Storlein.
My name is Kenneth Timadiri. My teacher's also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Nick Williams and I have Storlein.
I'm Kyle Bad and my teacher's also Mr. Storlein.
My name is Michaela Byros and my teacher's also Mr. Storlein.
My name is Casslyn Florian and my teacher's also Storlein.
Thank you. At the close of this session or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you students may ask for a signature on the agenda from any one of our administrative cabinet members who are sitting on that side of the room. And thank you for coming. Next, would someone like to move Part A of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Part A includes our contracts and field trip approval, things like that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brings us to Part B. First is the American Indian Education Transmittal Resolution. Director Saka?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the resolution of concurrence by the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to welcome you to the table. Heidi Hecker is our American Indian coordinator, American Indian parent's coordinator. And would you like to introduce your guests?
Sure, I sure will. I'll start on my left here at Lisa Benjamin, who works with me in Indian education. Next month will be five years that she's been with us and five great years. She's added so much to our program. Patty Weitenheimer is the Chair of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. We have Heather Deutschlander. And then her daughter, Ally White, who is a senior at Jefferson, but full-time at Normandale Hills... Or Normandale College, I'm sorry, currently. And so we, the parents committee, spent some time going over things. Maybe I'll let them explain how exactly they reached the decision for a concurrence. I'll hand that over to Patty.
Well, we meet on a monthly basis and we met with Dave Isted. Am I saying his name right? And looked at achievement for our population of students, which is about, what, 100 and...
Right now, we have, pre-K to 12, we have about 160 students.
160 students, Native Americans.
Excuse me, could you ever pull the microphone?
Oh, thank you.
And so, as a group, we decided that we concur with, and that we agree that... And I'm just gonna go ahead and read this. Where does it start? Okay. "Our group, the American Indian Parent Advisory Council for Bloomington Schools, voted yes on the transmittal of resolution. Although we do concur that the district is meeting student need overall, we were hesitant to do so based on the fact that the gap in achievement remains a great concern." So, we made a recommendation. Our parent group would like to see American Indian students have access to rigorous and robust enrichment and learning opportunities that are offered through the district beyond the school day. The major obstacles to access these opportunities are primarily the high cost to participate, the location of programs, and the transportation. And we noted 69% of Bloomington's American Indian families are free or reduced lunch eligible. You wanna read the acknowledgements?
Sure, I'll read the acknowledgements. "We are, however, appreciative of the collaborative efforts of the Elementary Curriculum Steering Committee and staff in regards to implementing the new social studies standards pertaining to American Indians. Heidi Hecker has been included in the ongoing process of the curriculum development, and we are optimistic regarding continuing this collaboration. With the assistance of the Curriculum and Instruction Department, Indian Ed is able to put their lending library online where teachers have greater access to it. As a result, we're happy to report an incredible increase in the use of Indian education resources. More than 600 books have been checked out over the past three years by district teachers."
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the panel?
Yeah, did you say that there were some hesitations about concurrence? I mean, what, what do you think were the... Or what is the concern about student achievement? And Heidi, what, how different is it now from back to, was that like, three years ago when we talked about these non-concurrents back then?
Yes. We have seen an increase in the math scores, but the math scores have gone up and then our reading is starting to go down. But even with our math scores going up, we're still experiencing a significant gap in the overall achievement, according to the test scores.
How bad is the gap?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, sorry.
Could you provide that information later?
Sure.
More detail on, you know, what's happening with reading, math, and... Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, in your report, you're saying that one of your recommendations is to increase access to the extracurricular programs. Do you know how many of the 160 students are currently participating in these extracurricular activities?
When we looked at this, I think about two years ago, there was, it was not significant at all. A couple.
I mean, you said there's barriers. Are you guys reaching out to these families and trying to encourage them to participate? And they're mentioning these barriers that's prohibiting them from doing it?
The families that we've talked to said they can't afford it. They simply can't afford it. And like Patty said, we say that 69% of our families qualify for free or reduced... Or the children qualify for free or reduced meals. And so with the, some of the, and I don't think there's scholarships available, or at least the families have said they don't know how to apply. And on the application, or not on the application, but the registration form, there's no place on there to apply for any scholarship money.
Yes, I have a question, if anyone has any data on that. Do you know how many people that do get free or reduced lunches of other persons of color that do access extracurricular programs?
We can get you that information.
Okay, so to help that out, I think it would be more scholarships and transportation. Would you say those are probably the two biggest barriers that we need to look at? Thank you.
Oh, I went first. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. First, I just wanna say thanks for coming. Appreciate, appreciate you coming here tonight. Lisa, congratulations on five years. Heidi, it's always nice to see you. Patty, Heather, Ally, thank you for coming. Appreciate everything that you guys are doing. And I want you to know that you can share with us at any time. It doesn't have to be in these formal settings. You can let us know how things are going, what you need, what you want. And we hope to see more of you more frequently. So, just let us know. There are, we all have email addresses and you can get to us. But thank you very much for what you do and thanks for coming.
Is there anything that comes to mind, policy-wise, that the board is doing or not doing that could, that's either helping or hindering Native American education in our district?
I can't think of anything policy-wise.
Do you feel that you are fairly reflected in our curriculum?
Working on it. Working on it.
I'll give you an example. I was just at a conference and the woman said, you know, I went through, she was in Chicago. But she said, it were, I went to school, when I graduated, I think she said she was from Colombia or Venezuela. She said, "I never thought that any Latino had ever invented anything because I never saw myself reflected in the curriculum." And a lot of people have said that if you don't see your own culture reflected in the curriculum, that you will become... You're more likely to become less engaged in, in school, just in general. So that's why I asked the question. If you feel, not to put you on the spot, but just if you felt that, that we're doing a good job of reflecting Native American in the curriculum.
I think there's a history of that, that we experienced, speaking for myself, growing up, that definitely we're not, you know, represented in the curriculum and marginalized overall. But I'm just really encouraged by some of the work that Heidi is being included in developing curriculum. We did some work and gave our input on some of the standards regarding Native Americans. And so, it's moving in the right direction.
But overall, you're right. There's, we have, we're moving in the right direction, but we have still a long way to go.
Long way to go.
Because sometimes too, when we found that there is inclusion, sometimes it's the very negative aspects of, of history that is not balanced with the positive influences, like inventions and contributions. So while we do see some movement in the right direction, we still have a lot of ground to cover. So I, I'm happy to see that we are making some movement in that direction.
Yeah, for the past three years, we have talked about certain concerns that, that, about family and family involvement, family engagement. Is anything different now? Does anything seem to be different? Or do you get the feeling that some of that had some improvement? What is, what happened with that?
With family, specifically for American Indians?
Yes, specifically.
Within our program? I think we, it depends upon what we're offering. We get some pretty good... We just had the Zoommobile. We got some outside funding to bring the Zoommobile in. And we had, I think, about 50 children, parents and their children attend that. And we had a big book distribution in December, almost equal numbers. So, we see, it depends upon what we offer. If it's something engaging, like books, free books in the Zoommobile, we tend to get a pretty good number. If you're talking about parent engagement in this, you know, in the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee specifically, is that what you're talking about?
Part of that, yes.
I think we, I don't know, we have six committee members right now. And I think for our size community, I think that's a pretty good representation. Of course, we'd always like more, but I think we have a pretty solid committee right now.
Have the parents been able to participate of discussions or activities that kind of allow them to express their concerns? Or, you know, we talked about that before, of, you know, how difficult it can be because of many different circumstances that families go through, not because they don't want to participate, but because of several different circumstances. That sometimes we don't get to hear the voice of all the families, right? Do you think that you, as a group, have provided for certain opportunities for parents to maybe be able to participate a little bit more? And have they been able to provide some more input that can be beneficial to, to them and to their students?
Every year, we offer what's called a public hearing, and we are bound by federal law to do that. And so every year, we have a public hearing and the achievement scores, program offerings, and a variety of other topics are put on the table to discuss. And so that's a great opportunity that we give families to, or parents specifically, to both be informed and to share their, their thoughts about that. And I think every time that we have different gatherings, there's always some kind of discussion about meeting the needs, needs of our kids and most specifically their, you know, children in their immediate family.
So when you said you have 160 students, that's about how many families, do you think?
When I do mailings every so often, it's about 90 mailings.
Okay. Thank you.
What else? What's the lending library?
Indian, our Indian education program has a very large Indian-authored library that we have been able to purchase. Because one of the things that we've discovered is there's not a lot of books in our media centers that are written by American Indian authors. And so when we, we had a very strong summer program for a number of years called Reading for Life. And so, the only thing that we read in that month were books authored by American Indians. And so we kind of expanded off of that to books for middle school and high school level, as well as some movies. And we are now offering it to our teachers. So they can either, you know, preview it to see if it's something they want to use in their class. We have some who, every year, certain times of the year, certain times in their curriculum cycle, check out class sets and use them in the classroom. And along with that, we have a culture trunk too, that teachers are able to check out.
It's a culture trunk?
The culture trunk is really awesome. It's on the seasonal aspects of the Ojibwe and the Dakota people. And so within that trunk are different hands-on items that teachers can use to teach about what happens in the fall or the winter, along with supporting lesson plans and, and books. It's pretty nice.
Is it available to board members?
I'd love to do a workshop if you'd like to have me back.
You asked for it.
Any other questions or comments?
Just maybe if Allison wanted to contribute a little bit to it as a, as a student who's soon graduating and participated in a program for many years.
I feel like the curriculum has... I feel like it's been really improving because as, growing up as a child, it wasn't really there when I started out. Like, I would have people ask me, like, the main concern is people see American Indians as like, very much past versus present. And we're kind of like viewed as being kind of stuck in the past and we're not really here in the present. So I feel like that's been improving and we're still trying, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further comments. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Number two on the agenda is right sizing the budget, finalized list of budget adjustments.
Madam Chair? Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the right sizing the budget list of budget adjustments of $4 million, as listed below, and directs administration to develop the 2015-16 budget using these adjustments to meet right sizing the budget target. Staffing reductions of $2.6 million, operational adjustments of $0.7 million, budget shifts of $0.7 million.
Second.
Thank you. Our Finance Director Radzicovic is here to give a presentation or just take questions?
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. We've talked through this list, both in a study session on the, I believe it was the 20th, and then also on the 26th. This is the final list that we presented to the board a little over a week ago for their approval tonight.
Just, do we have the list? We can put it on the slide there so people can see what the list entails? Might be helpful. There we go. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anyone else? Director Corman?
Yeah, well, I just wanna say thank you for, for trying as hard as you, as you're trying and making those second adjustments. I can see that, you know, when it comes to operational adjustments, you know, the family engagement part is included there where 70,000 is, you know, gonna stay in the general fund and not be used to funding the family engagement. However, what I would like to say is I hope that we continue to look at it as, that the part of the integration money that goes towards it, that we continue to look at that as money that can continue to be put in the classroom, rather than salaries. Just because I believe it will be more beneficial for them, for the students.
Thank you. Anyone else? No further comments? All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three is the rejection of a single bid received for Kennedy High School and Valley View Middle School.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 rejects the single bid received for WorkScope 23-A Mechanical and approves publicly re-advertising for new bids for this WorkScope.
Second, thank you.
This is a project that is part of our all-facility budgets for the summer. What we did is when we bid out the projects for security and also HV for, both at Kennedy High School and at Valley View Middle School, we had only one bidder for the mechanical, which was considerably higher than what was budgeted for that cost. Based on our architect and our construction management company, they recommend us going back out for bid for this. We are keeping the other bids for the other parts, the non-mechanical pieces. And will be brought to the board on, I believe it's the 9th of March. It's still within the 60-day limit of approving the bids that were in place at that point in time. So, we're still in good timing. It's just that we're trying to look at what is getting the best for our prices.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
So is there any reason or any belief why there's only one, one bid? Is it because we bid it lower than they can do it, so only one person put a bid out, or?
No, I, I think that right now, the, the way the economy is and the rest in the way of construction, it's tougher to get bids on these projects because there's a lot of projects out there, both in schools and in the private sector. So hopefully, we can, our construction company can encourage more bidders for the next round.
Okay, so when you said they were over budget, their bid was, is it substantially over the budget, or?
Yes.
So, okay, so hopefully, we'll be able to get some more bids that are more competitive?
Right, and, and if we've still come in with a bids that are not conducive to the budget, we'll have to defer that project for, to the following year.
Okay, so is this something that can be deferred for another year? Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Number four is a policy review.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Result that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the second reading of policy 524, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety.
Second.
Thank you. John Weiser, our Director of Technology and Information Services is here to answer any questions? Do you have a statement?
Chair Baralata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is the second reading of policy 524. It deals with Internet acceptable use and safety, use of computers in our district, internet access in the district, use of the network by staff and students. We made a minor word change just to one heading that was out of alignment between the first reading on January 26th and today. Otherwise, the document is as you read it on January 26th.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, Mr. Weiser, this is such a interesting area. Is the whole policy and the regulations included in the student handbook so they're all aware of what is in and what's out?
We have a truncated, not a seven-page document, but we have a truncated version. It's a one-pager or even a half-page that goes into all the student handbooks.
Thank you.
If you, down later in the regulations, you'll see an implementation section. And the implementation section links to that text.
I'm sure all of our students in the audience tonight have read that.
And abide by it.
All right. We got some thumbs up back there.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, there's also a resolution regarding policy 307.
Madam Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the deletion of policy 307 entitled Site-Based Councils.
Second, thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox is here to discuss that with us.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. Recent legislative changes to world's best workforce and the district's work to align our efforts around pathways to graduation are moving us toward more organizational alignment rather than the independent autonomous site-based work. The work the school board has already done on policy 603 by establishing the Pathways Advisory Committee, as well as the alignment of our strategic plan to the three-component framework has created clear structures and expectations at, at a site level. So rather than creating independent councils, our sites are actually creating teams that are aligned with the three components and pathways to graduation structure. Therefore, administration is recommending the deletion of School Board Policy 307, Site-Based Councils.
Thank you.
Could you give us an example of that? It, like, a site-based council that is now going to be something different or not exist?
Yeah, it's really about the work. So within the policy, if, in fact, on, in regulation, it's page three. So, site decision areas, as you went through that, some of what is there is really, rather than leaving it up to the individual site to determine. Example that we just went through with, with right sizing, the board was pretty clear that a thin ice area might be fifth-grade band or music. We're not leaving that up to the site or a site-based council to determine that. Once curriculum's determined and pushed on through, it's, this is what we're doing. We're gonna implement, it's a district-wide focus and expectation to implement specific programs in such a way that they're aligned throughout the district, rather than autonomous or site-based or up to the individual program.
So now, I know, for instance, Ridgeview Elementary went through PBIS training, and so they had their site-based group that did the training.
so they had their site-based group that did the training, and they were sort of the leadership team at the school. Is that not affected or is that affected by that?
No, each site still has a leadership team. So, everybody has their district leadership, or their site-building leadership team that will look at instruction, management, and the supports, the learning supports that go along with making sure they're operating in alignment. And then, our intention is to make sure that that's driven through the organization. So, you wouldn't have something that would be available to a child at one site but not available at another site. We'd want to make sure that, it could vary based on percentage or need, but it shouldn't be, we can get it here but we can't, we can't get it there.
Yeah, sure. Director Stigga.
As a parent, I spent a few years on elementary site council with my children in elementary. So, these teams, is there still room for parent participation on that? What percentage of the teams are parents? Do you have any idea or what's that?
Yeah, two different levels. So, every one of our, it doesn't undo the PTA, you know, the parent advisory groups that exist. What we're really trying to do is the alignment to pathways to graduation around the three components. So, the building leadership teams are really built around those three components rather than around any individual program or other interest area. They're focused on alignment through the system. Yeah, so certainly, we're encouraging parent engagement, parent involvement, family engagement, but not at the expense of alignment to other district priorities set by the School Board or other.
Thank you. Any other?
I guess, when I first read through this, I just thought, oh, this wouldn't be a big deal. But I guess the concern that I'm having is that if we take away local control, so to speak, that, my concern with that, we may foster a feeling of, well, we're doing this because they're making us versus we have control over certain things that we could or couldn't do in our school before, or maybe now we can't offer this because now the district is now saying that we can't do it. Do you see that as being an issue? Like, for instance, when you said, well, now, this program won't, it's not that it's available here and not available there. Well, would there be a situation where now it's not available either place?
Not if the board directs it, right? So, the example I used with music or band specifically at fifth grade, as a body, you get to determine what we offer to whom and at what cost. So, if you said, this is going to be available, we want it to be available across all of our sites, then we would go out and make sure that that's part of that expectation.
Sorry, one more question. Are there any existing site councils in any of our buildings now that would be being dissolved because of this, or are there not any?
Not that I'm aware of. It was really some years back, I think, when the kind of flavor of the day was to have more of that site-based autonomy, and that's moved back.
My experience when my kids were in high school was they couldn't get enough parents to show up for it. So, I did participate in it in the short time they had it. So, I know they haven't had one for a few years, so.
And I think elementaries probably have more engagement than secondaries do across the board, but.
So, it's not like there'd be a group of people that would be saying, oh, well, we can't have site council anymore?
No, and one of the things you did, policy 603, right, the Pathways Advisory, was to have a representative from each one of our sites coming up through, reporting to that group, and then back to you. So, you have at least one and often a second sitting on that committee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that brings us to the report of the closed session that we had after our last meeting, January 26th. The School Board Superintendent and members of the Cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, January 26th for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. The discussion was preceded by a brief presentation on the current salary schedule. No School Board action was taken or required. Thank you. Next, we'll have board member reports.
First, my early childhood advisory committee meets this Thursday, so I have nothing new to report, other than they are still in need of a stereo receiver, if anyone has one laying around to donate. That'll go along with the speakers that they're going to be getting for when they have events where they need, where they want their laptop sound system to be louder. And then, we met earlier this evening with the Youth Advisory Council, had a group of seniors from both Jefferson and Kennedy. I believe there was nine total, had some great discussion with them about some of the community education and their involvement. Also, had a good discussion about offering zero-hour versus summer courses, so that was very good. Our next meeting is with the middle schoolers here on March 23rd at 5:30, and then we'll be meeting with the middle schoolers and the high schoolers at Veep on April 13th at 5, going until no later than 6:30.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Director Bergstrom.
I don't want to dive in first all the time. So, I had an opportunity to attend the PTSA council meeting. This is the once-a-month council meeting where all the reps from every school come together. It's actually in that half of our room, we pull the dividers across. It's a great time for people in attendance to catch up with what's going on in all the different schools, gain some perspective. So, I appreciate everything that the PTSA council is doing. Was also fortunate enough to attend Olson Elementary's White Tiger Rally. That happened two, a Friday, a week ago, on Friday. Somehow or another, I was talked into getting up on stage and doing my best to participate in Jump Rope for, I think it was Jump Rope for Life. There was a student group that came in from a Minneapolis school, and they were just fabulous with, what do you call it, double dutch, where you have two ropes going back and forth and back and forth, and you have to count. I was able to count to two, so I did make it around once or twice, but it was a lot of fun. It was a great energy. Paul Meyer is the principal over there. Want to say thanks to the staff over there for all the fun stuff that they do for their kids, make sure that everybody's dialed in and learning well. Also, just this last Friday, it was a half-day conference, Future Leaders, over at the Bloomington Hilton on France and American Boulevard, and that's put on by the business community leaders here in town. We had, I want to say 14 or 15 tables, round tables. There were three presentations, and in between each presentation, the students would move tables, and there were two adult facilitators. I happened to be with a park ranger from the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife, and she was sharing her perspective on opportunities just to get out and move around and enjoy Bloomington's outdoors. But there were representatives from all the different business communities here in Bloomington, and the kids could go around and ask questions and talk. And once they found out I was on the School Board, they asked about, they did not ask about toilet paper, but they did ask about the school lunches. What could I do to change the school lunches? So, we had some interesting conversations about school lunches, and some of them liked it a lot, some of them had some opportunity for change. But that's a really interesting venue, and I would encourage any of the students that are listening in tonight to look into possibility of coming next year. That's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Last week, I attended the officer's training for clerk. It's always, you know, good information, lots to learn. And last Friday, I attended the AMSD meeting. Really interesting conversations to, and a lot of conversations regarding bills that will have to do with teacher's evaluation and QCOM. So, that will be something that we will be talking about, I'm sure, in the next weeks. And, oh, I have to report that the Legislative Committee for the School Board met also last week, and that will be Dawn and Tom and myself. And we had a good meeting, and we're going to be meeting with Superintendent Fujitaki to discuss some of the bills we're going to be going through, and then we'll bring a report back to you, to the board.
Thank you.
We're getting ready also for our forum, our next forum with the legislators.
Thank you. Director Stigga.
I attended the PTSA, since we changed committees, I'm now the rep to the PTSA committee, and so I attended their meeting, and they had a recap of their Winter Parent Academy and talked a little bit about their Spring Academy there. And there was also an update on next technologies for learning plan. I'm also now the representative to the Diversity Committee, and so the Diversity Committee talked about the merger of the family engagement and the Office of Equity and Education, a little bit of how that's going to look. And I also have homework from there because they're all reading a book, so, and then we're going to have discussion. And so, the book is Courageous Conversations About Race, A Field Guide for Achieving Equity in Schools. So, that will be part of that committee's work and discussion coming up after we all read the book. I also had the opportunity to fill in for Rockin' Readers at Valley View, where I'm the ambassador to that elementary, while they're out of town in February, and my daughters also volunteered with me, so that was a great event. I was very impressed that the kindergartners were reading so well, the kindergartners that I worked with, so it was very impressive. I also attended the Valentine's Day Dance at Southwood, where I was, got to start the Hop-a-thon and have all the little kids jump up and down, so that was very fun, and they were so cute, all dressed in their Valentine's outfits for the dance. I also was at Game Night at Oak Grove Elementary, and then I had a chance to also attend Bloomington Gold, which was a show choir competition with schools from other states. I think there's maybe 20 schools that compete, just an excellent event. I just want to say that, you know, all of the things, the Valentine's Day Dance, Game Night, and Bloomington Gold, you know, those events are so spectacular because of the parents that volunteer to do the work at these events. You know, they're doing the concession stand at the dance, and they're doing the book fair at Oak Grove, and the volunteers that put that Bloomington Gold together, unbelievable. They were there at, I think, 5:30 Saturday morning, and they were still there at midnight Saturday night, volunteering to put that together. It was also, I thought, a really great showcase of Bloomington schools because I sat by people from Wisconsin and Iowa and other schools when I attended, and one lady told me, oh, we enjoyed it so much last year that we had to come back this year. Another lady commented on it was such a well-run event that they were so happy with it, so I just thought it was a very good showcase, and our students also were a great host to have all these other schools in their building, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Well, I have a few things. Today, I attended the National African-American Parent Involvement Day at Indian Mounds, and it was an interesting day. They had, the section I went to was Know Thy Impact, and they talked about the impact they have on the children. It was very interesting. I do want to remind you of two events that are coming up. Tomorrow evening is the Bloomington United for Youth Recognition Event at 6:00 PM, so it's February 10th, 6:00 PM in the city council chambers, and all board members are invited to attend and to congratulate the honorees. And I also want to make sure that all the board members have on their calendar the March 17th MSBA Breakfast, which will be held here in this boardroom at 7:00 AM, and it will include a discussion regarding the Career and College Academy. So, just want to make sure you have that on your calendar. Thank you. Turn it over to the superintendent.
Madam Chair, thank you. I have three topics. The first is that our district is moving from our current email platform to Gmail as our new email platform, and that conversion is scheduled to take place in March. To prep for that conversion, our Director of Technology, John Weiser, will be giving a Gmail class to the board. Because the board will be getting this as a group, administration requests a motion to establish a study session, or a staff development session, and that's for February 23rd at 6:15 PM. So, may I have a motion, please?
So, move. Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the study, staff development session on February 23rd at 6:15 PM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Following that staff development session, will be a board meeting that's scheduled to start at 7:00 PM. At the close of that meeting, there'll be a study session. The second topic is about the Career College Academy. That's our new program that's designed to help juniors and seniors get a jumpstart on a career. If the public wants to know more about this program, please visit our website. They also have another opportunity to learn about this program. We're having an informational open house, and it's going to be on February 12th from 2:30 in the afternoon to 7:00 PM at night. It is at the Bloomington Career and College Academy, and that's located at the former Lincoln High School. It is on the north side of the campus, it's in the building on the north side of the campus. The address is 8800 Queen Avenue South, and it is on the second floor. It's in Suite 219. So, the parents, students, and the public are welcome to attend. That's on February 12th, 2:30 to 7:00 PM. The last topic is, next week is School Board and Recognition Week. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the board for the hours that they put in every month, helping produce quality education programs for our entire community. So, therefore, on behalf of our entire school community, I thank the board for their great work, their leadership, their commitment and dedication for producing and leading this outstanding school district. So, thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board? If not, this meeting is adjourned.